...of the Gostown Planning Board. This is a workshop land use process meeting. There are no other scheduled items on the agenda. We begin with introduction, starting with Brian.
I'm Brian Rose. I'm the planning and zoning administrator now.
Phil Davanzo Selectman.
Mark Warden, Planning Board.
Ella Brooke, Recording Secretary.
Tim Redmond, Vice Chairman, serving for Alan Yaton, who could not be here tonight.
Steve Dutton, Alterment.
Carlos Adams.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the minutes of the March 24, 2011 minute meeting. Everyone was mailed a copy of the minutes in their packet. Does anyone have any corrections or additions?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Phil Davanzo to approve.
I have one comment.
Okay.
There's a sentence on page one that says Carl-
We need a second. We need a second. You made a motion to approve. He wants to discuss it.
No, you need a second.
Before we can discuss it? Okay, second.
Seconded by Mark. Okay, Mark, you have the floor.
Okay, the comment says on page one of the minutes, under Source Water Plan and Zoning Amendment, second paragraph, Carl Foley asked the commitment. And I don't know what that means.
He asked what the commitment was for the position that they were looking to fill. They were asking-
I remember that now.
Okay, so is that sufficiently cleared, everybody else?
So the clarification should read that Carl Foley asked the commitment to the-
Did he ask what the commitment was?
Yes, what the commitment was.
Can we stand corrected at that, please?
Thank you.
Any other corrections or additions? Okay. No other corrections or additions. There's a motion on the floor by Phil, seconded by Mark, to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll have to abstain, I wasn't present.
And abstentions?
Standing as well.
So we have three votes in favor. Chair votes yes. We have a-
Uh-oh.
Huh? Thought you had a problem with the vote.
Yeah.
Okay. Three in favor and two abstentions.
Right.
Okay. The second item on the agenda is a copper of the- copy of the letter from the Southern New Hampshire Planning to the Conservation Commission regarding not recommending the Piscataquag River watershed land conservation plan to be adopted as part of the Gostown's master plan. That is also in your packet. Brian, could you please give us some information on that subject?
As far as I understand it, the Conservation Commission reviewed it and basically stressed that they had some concerns in the second paragraph. It says they have concerns with the proposed plan lacking the availability of the necessary data to accurately reflect the town of Gostown's values and natural resources. And then it says they're happy with the goals, principles, and priorities, and the identified targets and focus areas that are singled out are not correct. Therefore, the Conservation Commission is not in favor to recommend the Piscataquag River watershed land conservation plan to be adopted as part of the master plan for the hazardous mitigation plan. Basically, I think, and I know we have Kimberly here tonight, so she probably could add to that, but I think they just were at the point where they didn't feel it was ready or had enough information to be able to incorporate it into our plan as part of our code and part of our rules and regulations. And so that's basically it. And you have the minutes attached behind this. Sort of, some of the areas of interest are highlighted. So if you wanted to read through those again.
Thank you, Brian. Does any member of the board have any comments or questions about what Brian just talked about? Seeing none, I'll ask Kimberly if she'd like to speak to the matter briefly, or is it all summed up?
Yeah, I think it's pretty much summarized in the letter. We felt that it, the study has some great goals and some great objectives, but the data was really incomplete for our town. And, you know, the concern that we, the main concern that we had was for, if we incorporated this as a tool in our master plan, for someone to say, this parcel looks good on this co-observance map that they have produced, when in actuality, we didn't feel like the values were weighted correctly and that there's a lot of missing data, and some of the layers they're relying on are quite correct either. So we just don't, we feel like it accurately reflects an accurate weighting of parcels in our town. So, you know, we were trying to be as supportive of their efforts as we could, and we've commented on the process several times, making suggestions to them that they look at different ways of looking at the data. But in the end, we are uncomfortable with adding this into our master plan. So we feel like it needs some more work, so.
Any other members of the commission would like to be heard? David?
David Nevin, Conservation Commission. Yeah, actually, if you dig into the details of it and really look very closely at it, there are complete pieces of information completely missing from Gostown. You know, this was a study that was done for the entire watershed, and they relied on a number of different data layers and information, some of, many of which are just fine, obviously, the topography's right, it doesn't go on anywhere. But there are layers, such as the State Wildlife Action Plan, which is a very good plan. It's for looking at a large macro scale of the state, and they do a lot of extrapolation in that data. But when you drill down into our watershed, and you look at those base layers for the different towns, you'll see some very strange wildlife habitats. For example, you look in Dunbar, and you'll see three perfectly circular wildlife habitats, which, what that corresponds to is hard to say. But it begins to be a little more obvious, as you look closer at it, you'll see areas like the Hawkinson Reservoir floodplain area ranked very high. Well, it ranks very high in part because it's been studied. You know, they do environmental impact statements for the federal government studying that area, so the data is incorporated into it. When they did a similar study for the tracking station in New Boston, you know, again, data was brought in. That area suddenly turns out very high, in contrast to land immediately around it. It's not just in Gostown that this is inaccurate. The circular areas, I don't know. I mean, it could be something like a study that was done for a cell tower, who knows? We don't have the insight into that depth of it, but it's clear when you look at it that it simply is not right. We pointed out and reported back to them on two previous occasions, explicitly data that was missing for Gostown, areas that they could have added, areas that they could have included, which they didn't. It's just simply, and then they take all these data layers, combine them together, and create what they call a co-occurrence model, saying that, you know, we're taking these as the most important features, putting all this together into one layer and saying, this is the areas you should, you know, be focusing on. But if the data going in isn't correct, what comes out isn't correct either, and it really bears no resemblance to what is on the ground here in Gostown. And it's very clearly, clear to see why. I think one of the most surprising features in the whole thing was that this supposedly was being created for the PLC. And when you looked in the Gostown map, one of the things they rated high were areas that already had conservation protection, and there were a number of important ones in Gostown missing. In fact, what was missing was every single PLC easement area. So it's, at that point, all you can do is throw up your hands and go, wait a minute, guys, you gotta go back to the drawing board and try to fix this. So unless it is fixed, it's our opinion that it, you know, there's literally no point in adopting something that doesn't reflect accurate data.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kim, you all set?
I'm all set. We discussed this many a time. We had meetings during the summer to look over all this and give our input. Repeatedly, we told them that we had issues, and it has come back a couple of times. As a matter of fact, we had a representative a while ago come to our meeting and go over the information with us, and we told him in person that we had issues with it. So the final, the final copy, we discussed in detail at our last meeting, and that's why the report was generated.
Do you feel that the Conservation Commission can continue to work with them towards a solution at this time? Because it would be nice to at least respond to the problem, you know, because the Planning Board is also going to respond in regards to the point source water protection plan that they wanted us to develop, put into our development regulations. And if my memory serves me correct, we elected to wait until we can talk more with the town engineer, with the water precinct, and develop a comprehensive plan that does not duplicate regulations and create more issues that don't really need to be there. So hopefully, the Conservation Commission will make another attempt to get something that they can live with, so that we can come up with something. David?
We, the same memo that you received, we also requested a copy described to Southern New Hampshire Plan, so they would know what our, sorry about the cold here. They would know about our objections, and we would welcome the opportunity to work with them to get this fixed.
Because obviously, we're not going to put anything into our development regulations or master plan that we don't all agree with.
Or even know what it's in it.
If they have, if they have a mission, you know, we'd be happy to help them with their mission, but it has to also serve the town of Gostown. Okay.
Yeah, I would just say, I think David's right. The information just isn't complete. For instance, a lot of those circles, oftentimes, what those represent is an occurrence of a threatened or endangered species. Somebody may have observed it, a single individual of a species, so they'll identify the point and then just put a random buffer around it. So, I mean, what does that mean?
Not much.
Not much.
Anybody else have any comments on the board? Any other, anybody in the public wish to speak to this subject? Okay. Thank you for your comments, and we'll hopefully work towards a solution here. Whether it gets into the master plan or not, we'll find out, but at least we can try to make an effort to respond to them, and if they're receptive, great. If they're not, oh, well. Okay, Brian, anything else on this subject? I don't think so, right?
Not on that subject.
And the last one is a copy of the letter from the Southern New Hampshire Planning regarding the regional impact of the proposed supermarket in Bedford. Would you, I did some research on my own. I'll let you go first, Brian, and let, inform the board of what that's about.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, staff, Megan and myself, had talked to some of the representatives over in Bedford, as well as the representative from TF Moran. Did you speak with them as well, or? Okay, well, we did review, though, the traffic impact analysis and all the information regarding traffic and transportation and improvements to the area around the new proposed market basket there on 114 and New Boston Road. The conclusion that we came up with is that they're making improvements enough to satisfy traffic changes, so any impacts to traffic, they're, they're taking care of those. And they're, you know, extending the roadway probably farther than what they even need to be. They're spending more money on doing the improvements than what they typically may be required to do. So they're actually doing more than what their requirement would be for their impact. And due to that, my recommendation would be to, I know the board had come up with a motion last, was it last meeting or the meeting prior, to write a letter to the Bedford Town Planning Department and Planning Board recommending some transportation improvements along 114. My recommendation would be to take that motion and throw it out the window. Just, just to take it back and rely on staff's recommendation to, that that, that those improvements are satisfactory for, for what they're doing.
Did you ever receive a copy of the traffic studies as we talked about?
I did, and I, I sent that over to Megan for her review, and she looked at that as in-depth as possible and came up with the recommendation that they're fine, that they shouldn't need to do anything more than what they're proposing to do.
Carlos?
I mean, I recall that what we were concerned with was whether or not, excuse me, the traffic impact study went beyond Donald Street and further towards the town of Gostown to determine whether or not improvements were warranted or not. And so I don't know if the study did go beyond the Donald Street intersection.
Meg?
Yeah, it did include the Shirley and St. Ace intersection, so that's really what I focused on. I mean, I looked at the overall plans, but I didn't get into too much detail about what they were proposing right at their site. I focused on the traffic numbers, the pre-numbers and the post-numbers. That's how they do them, and they do them, and they look at build and no build is what they call it in 2011, and then they look out 10 years, 2021. So I looked at those numbers, and there really wasn't a big difference between build and no build. That intersection is already, you know, suffering.
Which, which one?
The St. Ace intersection. I can't remember if it, I should have drawn on my summary, but like, I want to say, you know, the PM timeframe. There was one timeframe at which, you know, the intersection in 2021 is coming close to, quote, "failure," meaning like, intersections are rated for a capacity, and when the capacity gets over 1.0 is the number in the traffic study, you know, it's, it's kinda, it throws off the results of a traffic report. Once you get over 1.0 on this one type of factor, it, it ends up kind of acting like queues could be infinite lengths long. Do you know what I mean? It can throw everything off. So really, when that gets above 1, I don't know how accurate your results are in your report. But what I'm saying is, without the build and no build situation, we're still at that, we still have that problem. So I, I don't believe this is contributing any, you know, it, it, there are some increased traffic counts, not many at all. It was pretty minimal. But I'm just saying, looking at that report quickly, we definitely have an issue with that intersection that will need to be dealt with in the future, because it appears to be reaching its capacity in the next 10-year timeframe.
So the level of service with and without doesn't very much-
It did not, it's not very much at all. They, they did, I found, I believe it was TF Moran who did the report, and I want to say maybe VHB who did the full review. So there were multiple traffic studies, and I tried to read their summary results from VHB, and I did find that they made some timing adjustments, some minor timing adjustments to that intersection, you know, to help with the queuing. But, so it looked pretty minimal. Nothing jumped out that scared me, looking like it went from a level of service like, you know, C to a D, or there was no change like that.
Well, regarding the Donald Street intersection itself, I called the Public Works Director in Bedford, and I spoke to him, and he told me, what Brian told me, that they have, they have done more than their traffic impact was going to, they're required to by the traffic impact. They've actually are adding lanes in the Donald Street intersection. They're adding a turning lane on the, if you'd be eastbound side of 114, turning onto New Boston Road. And they're also adding a dedicated turning lane, as you're coming in the other direction, it turns onto Donald Street. So they're going to flare out that area and create more travel lanes for turning traffic, so that they're hoping that might help alleviate the through traffic, where you have to sit in line to wait to make the turn. But that's all they're doing down there, so. The only, I'm sorry, Phil, go ahead.
That's okay. Also, Tim, I noticed in here, it says that the development also includes off-site improvements for a roundabout on Donald Street extension.
Yeah, that's in their plan. I looked at their plan. Brian had a copy of it.
Yeah.
They're building, they're building a roundabout at the entrance to the Market Basket site on Donald Street, so the traffic can flow around it to enter and exit the site as opposed to having adding another light right there. And that's on the plan, and Brian has a copy of that, if anybody wants to see it.
Now, basically, you'll come, come in off of 114, go a little ways, and then hit the roundabout, which would then take you into the site, and then you could go and park in, in the site. And you would exit, back out, and come through the roundabout, back out towards 114, so.
The only concern I have, and I don't know if the board shares my concern, is we were, we were offered a comment on a regional impact the same night that they were going in for their final plan and asking for their approvals. And I thought regional impact was determined at the beginning of the planning process, so that we did have an opportunity to comment, and our comments could be heard and possibly incorporated. So maybe in the future, if Bedford is going to send us a regional impact, that we would get it in a more timely fashion, so that we could actually have a response that could be incorporated into the plan if, if they're willing to accept any comments from us.
If you, if you'd like, I can talk with Rick Sawyer-
Anybody agree or disagree with that statement?
I agree.
I agree, yeah.
That was a big issue, because by the time you guys were supposed to go over there, they already made that decision.
And the night, they were actually, they were actually asking for their final plan approval the night that Carlos and I were going to-
Right.
-attend, and then that got moved out for some other reasons, so.
That, that meeting is now scheduled April 25th, so it's coming up.
Well, maybe if you could just send Rick Sawyer a nice polite letter saying that if we could be, you know, included in the process earlier, it would, would be advantageous to us. John, please.
Thank you. Because this is my second meeting, I don't have the history here. What does, what they, what Bedford want to do with Market Basket on Donald Street have to do with Gostown planning? I understand the traffic flow may be on 114, but why would we be getting involved with anything that they want to do?
I'll try to answer this, and anybody can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. When, when an application is accepted at a planning board, we determine whether or not that application will have a regional impact on the surrounding towns. And at that point, if we deem an application to have a regional impact, we notify the surrounding communities and ask for their comments. So if the Bedford Market Basket was deemed to have a regional impact, we're asking that we be notified earlier in the process so that we could possibly make some constructive comments that would relate to the traffic flow out of Gostown and pass the site and then on into the interstate system. We have notified other towns of regional impacts for projects we've had, as I remember. And we've received comments from other towns on things that, you know, may or may not have an, you know, an impact on the project, but at least we're asking for comments. And I think, I think that sums it up, if anybody else wants to add to that. Phil?
Also, they should, and I'm not sure if it's required by, by statute, but they should have that opportunity. The areas that are involved in a regional impact should be able to attend the public hearing that they're having on the project and through the process of the public hearings that they have, and be able to speak as, as, because of the fact that it has a regional impact, not necessarily has an abut directly to the project, but you're in a budding community that has a regional impact, so you should be able to have that input during the public hearing process for it. And I think the point that, that Vice Chairman is trying to bring up is the fact that we were notified about this regional impact. We sent a couple of representatives there, and when they went there, the public hearing process was closed, and they were basically there for-
We never actually got to go, Phil, because we were notified that the meeting had been moved to this coming week.
Right, well, I mean, but-
Our plan was to have gone.
Right, but point being is, and in the past, when we've had it the other way, I think that we've always tried to make sure that we got that notice out to whoever had the, we determined that had a regional impact, so that they had that opportunity to participate, because it would seem appropriate that if this has a regional impact, and let, let's say that this regional impact, for example, came down to St. Ace Drive a certain amount, well, you have St. Ace College that's there that owns a lot of property there, that they, if they're going to be impacted somehow, that they should have the ability to participate in that public hearing process and either ask questions or express a concern that they might have during that process. And that's part of the whole reason of coming up with the regional impact. A lot of, in fact, it's, a lot of it's so that if something is being cited in one community and it's next to the border of another town, just because that's another town and they don't directly abut that, that doesn't necessarily, they're not impacted. So those people should have the same, I mean, they're citizens of the state, and they should have the same opportunity as people that are impacted in the same distance around it, so.
Okay, just to clean things up here, we had a motion to have Brian send a letter to the planning board stating our concerns about the traffic, and that emotion, Brian has not fulfilled that letter, so I'm looking for a motion to rescind that motion, so that we don't leave Brian in the lurch, because we did make an official motion and request that he do that. So do you think it's necessary for us to countermand that, that order with another motion? Otherwise, Brian would end up being remiss in his duties, and I wouldn't want to hold it against him.
Well, it's either that or he came back and he did report that it was, we could take his recommendation, what was it, to throw that-
Throw it out the window.
Well, if that's okay with the board, I just want to make sure that we leave this clean and not leave any-
I think by taking a motion to accept Brian's recommendations and not pursue it any further, I think wraps it up.
All right, would you make that motion, please, Carlos?
Yeah, I'll second that.
The motion was by Carlos to accept Brian's recommendation, seconded by Phil. Any more discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes in yes. Okay, we're going to go to the regular workshop land use process agenda.
Mr. Chair, before we do that-
Brian?
One item of business that we started to discuss last meeting but put off to this meeting was assigning a planning board representative to the Source Water Protection Plan Advisory Committee. And so I'd like to just bring that back up to the board tonight to hopefully get someone that is willing to serve on that advisory committee.
And did you have information as to when that committee is going to meet, so someone would know what schedule they'd be getting into if they did accept the position?
Well, up until yesterday, I had some information, but then they, they are changing their meeting time just due to conflict that they've got, that Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission has. So the, the meetings are set as needed.
Will they be daytime meetings or evening meetings? I was trying to get to-
Not a specific meeting, but as of now, they've been daytime meetings, but any comments from any of the membership could change that. I mean, if, if needed, we could always do an evening meeting in order to accommodate people's schedules, so.
Does anybody want to volunteer for the position? Okay. Steve, you already serve as the Southern New Hampshire Planning from the board, don't you?
That's Carl. I'm on the economic development.
Excuse me, okay, Carlos. Did Carl express an interest in doing that at the last meeting, or was he sort of holding out for what was, the agenda was going to be?
He had asked the question of what the responsibility, what the commitment was, and that was it. He didn't express anything further than that, but I'm not sure.
Good time to appoint him.
When he's not here.
Yeah, but I think he was, I think he was asking that question because the suggestion came up to appoint Steve.
Right, well, I'm not going to appoint Steve, because we did that once before when he wasn't here. Twice is not fair.
If I had my recommendation, I would pick Carlos, though, because you're very knowledgeable in the area of just wetlands and DES and water and that kind of thing. So, I mean, that would be my recommendation, but I'll let you.
Well, that would, that would be providing Carlos's schedule would allow him to leave his work.
I'd be happy to, but I already serve on the planning board, the Conservation Commission, the Piscataquart River Local Advisory Committee.
I know.
The Board of Selectmen.
Wow.
And...
And the Board of Selectmen.
What?
Board of Selectmen as well. All right, well...
What?
I'm sorry. You, I, my mistake.
Gostown Junior Baseball, so that's not a dis... Easy mistake.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sitting on for Gostown Conservation Commission.
You're the representative for the Conservation?
As of right now, I sit on the Source Water Protection Plan Committee. If that helps.
I don't know how our interests would diverge from the, those of the plan, of the Conservation Commission.
You're two different boards. I, I think it's appropriate to have someone assigned.
What, what is the commitment, Brian? I mean, how, how often do they meet? Day meetings are out of the question.
Right now, we've been meeting maybe once a month, so it's not terribly...
What's a daytime meeting? It's a daytime meeting, though?
It has been a daytime meeting, however, I mean, we, like, like I said, we can change that if needed.
Well, Carl might have an interest in it.
I'm not gonna point anybody to a position and tell them they have to leave their work to go to a meeting. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna do that. Somebody else wants to volunteer, that's fine, but I'm not gonna, this is a tough time for people to be leaving their jobs to go to a Southern New Hampshire planning meeting. That's a lot less important than keeping your job, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, and even if it's someone that can, you know, read the document, get familiar with it, and provide some comments, you know, even if they can't necessarily appear at a planning board meeting, you know, that would be better than, better than nothing.
I'd like to defer to appointing someone tonight until we have Carl here, in case he did want to volunteer for the position.
That's a good idea.
Rather than appoint someone in abstention here. I just don't think that's fair. And they can go on another couple of weeks without us. I'm sure they'll, they'll get by. Okay. So everybody agree on that at this point? All right, the workshop agenda is, everybody has a copy of the workshop agenda. There's some extras laying around up here if anybody in the audience doesn't have one. I would like to make one small suggestion, and I don't know if you all are gonna agree with me or not. The CIP Committee, when we meet, we set a nine o'clock deadline for our discussions, and if we're gonna go over nine o'clock, we vote to go past nine o'clock in an effort to try to keep things from becoming long, embroiled discussions. If the board would like to do that tonight, we have an hour and a half to go through these items if we think we can do it. Otherwise, we could be here till eleven o'clock tonight. I haven't had supper yet, so I'm in favor of that.
Fine, fine with the time limit.
Would the board agree that if we, if we're gonna go past nine o'clock, we would do so as a vote among the board members to continue?
No move.
Yes, okay. Doesn't need to be a motion, it just needs to be agreed upon. Okay. Brian, I'm gonna let you, you don't, I don't know if you have to do the introductions, we've already done that, the items of consideration, could you begin with them, those first two bullet items, Brian?
Well, this was some information that had just kind of been submitted to me from our fearless chairman, Alan Eaton. He had put together some thoughts and bullet points about what he would like to bring up or discuss, possible discussion points. So, you know, development regulations and the process was one of them. I know that the, the board has been interested in trying to streamline any processes that we can, and I think any changes that we do would most likely get implemented into the development regulations. So, I mean, I think that would be just a discussion point that we should open up and, and discuss with the, with the board and with other boards here tonight. You know, we've got several representatives from other boards and, you know, how we, how we can maybe make our process a little smoother. And so that's, I'll put that one out there for the board.
Okay, we'll start with the first bullet point, the development regulation process changes. As Brian mentioned, it has been discussed at this board to try to, streamline was a bad word, I don't think was the correct word. I think to, to shorten the time that developers or applicants have to actually spend at the meetings by trying to do some of the work, I think, in advance, prior to showing up at the meetings. Now, does it, I'd like to open that up for discussion for the board members. Anybody have any comments on that subject?
Well, I, there's one point that I bring up on it, and a lot of that's gonna depend on how much this board is willing to let staff do and how much you're gonna take those recommendations, or we're gonna take those recommendations and then wind up going through a whole nother process with it. So at some point, the question is, how much are we willing to allow staff to handle on our behalf?
Wouldn't it be more of a case of, of staff handling items that specifically meet our regulations? In other words, using a drainage study. If someone's pre-development water is, is the same number as their post-development water, we don't need to talk about that here at our meetings. We could let engineering and their engineers do all the calculations, draw a plan that meets the requirements, not asking for waivers, and then bring that forward, all completed, and not sit here and talk about some of the stuff we talk about and drag meetings on forever and ever, when they're, they should be cut and dried in the regulations, as far as I'm concerned. They meet the regulations, they meet the regulations.
Right, and that's exactly my point. And it's not only, I mean, you mentioned one thing as an example, another example could be something to deal with a sign. I mean, you know, we go through, we get a recommendation from Main Street, goes through staff, and they look at it, and are we gonna sit here and we're gonna start discussing the height of the letters, the color of the letters, the content, I mean, get into that, to that level of, of micromanagement on that? Or are we just gonna let staff make that recommendation to us and accept, you know, be able to accept it rather than we're gonna sit here and discuss it and go on till eleven o'clock at night?
Right, and I think as far as a sign goes, when Main Street gives their recommendation, I think that we should probably agree with Main Street and say, fine, if, if they think it looks good and it's gonna do good for the village, why not just go along with it? Why, why talk about it here?
Or even one step further would be to remove the requirement to have the planning board even need to make a recommendation or approval. You know, allow staff to make the final approval on that based on a recommendation from the Main Street Board.
I think that would be going one step too far, in my opinion, but that's...
John, that sounds like extending the authority of the town over the board. Is that what, is that? That sounds like we're extending your authority and taking it away from the board. Is that what you're suggesting?
Right, it would, it would extend the authority to the staff to make the official approval, similar to the way that, you know, other things are approved. I mean, small temporary sign permits are approved that way. Other, regular sign permits are approved that way, except for the ones that come through the Main Street area. So, I mean, as long as, you know, the board feels comfortable with staff checking with the Main Street Board every time, you know, that, that would be, I think it's been a very easy one to, to shorten up your agendas and not have to even deal with things like that. Especially if you're just gonna not discuss it and just take my recommendation anyway. I mean, that, that sounds like, what I'm hearing, you wanna trust the staff more than, you know, put, put the power in my hands to just do it.
Mark?
That would be an easy way.
Yeah, thank you. It sounds like an okay idea on its surface, and if it's for approvals, sure. If the staff agrees with what has been presented by the applicant, I don't see a problem with it. But certainly if it's a, if it's not approved, then we want to maintain the opportunity for appeal to the applicant and not remove that possibility from them.
Sure, and they would still have that ability to appeal?
To the planning board.
Any appeal made by myself would typically go to the zoning board, I think.
So what do we do? Do we have to put these recommendations in, in writing so that we can discuss them at a future time, or what are we, how are we gonna proceed here?
I think there's a lot of issues that are based strictly on technical criteria, high, you know, roadway design criteria, for instance. And I think what we need to do is, is look at the items before us and figure out which can go in that pile and can be handled as a strictly an administrative process by the staff. And then there would be another pile where it's really planning issues, where it's not cut and dry. Certainly, when you get into cases where they're requesting waivers, I mean, there's, there's...
They have to come here.
They'd have to come here. I mean, we've gotta talk about that to figure out where they fit in the process. But, you know, we have to, I think, in the past, I think the board's been a little reluctant to give up, you know, some of that taking at face value and in blind faith, if you will, it's not a great way to put it, but at face value, that DPW's done their job, they've reviewed it, everything's hunky-dory. It's a done deal. We don't need to talk about that stuff. But I think, as I say, I think in the past, the board's been a little, little reluctant to give up some of that stuff. And that's hard to do, when you've been doing it for so long, to just, you know, all of a sudden have this paradigm shift where we give up that sort of authority, if you will. But I don't have a problem with it. I think that's the way it needs to be done, because we are a planning board, we're not a technical review committee. We already have projects, we put projects through technical review. And if the, if the recommendations from the folks like DPW who are versed in this sort of thing come to us and say, and it's complete, it's ready to go, good enough for me. But I think it will take a little bit of work to, to shake that stuff out, but I don't think it's that great an effort.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Mark?
Thank you. In regards to the process, it'd be nice to have some input from the so-called customers also. I mean, I realize they're probably not here tonight, but if this is an ongoing process for improving the process, then certainly I'd like to hear from people who've been before, or through this process more than once and have a, a feel for where the bottlenecks are.
That's something Mark, Brian could do, of course. He could, he could send emails to the people that have been in this room before with, with projects and let them submit comments to Brian.
Great.
Phil?
But I think also part of the discussion where, where we've been, I mean, what, prior to the newer members, we've had during the process that we've gone through while customers or applicants were here, we've had some of those experiences sometimes, and we've had those comments one way or another expressed to us, whether they were sometimes in an affirmative way or sometimes as a result of perhaps frustration. So, I mean, I, and I think that's why we're having that discussion tonight.
And I think you could also do a little historical research and find out where the common denominators are. What are the, the issues or the items that are most stumbled over, over and over again? Because that gives you a clue that there's something wrong with our regulations. If, you know, there's a specific issue that keeps getting brought up over and over again, I mean, I think we can do a little bit of that as well.
And as, you know, as in the last ten years or so, the plans have become so much more complicated. All the rules and regulations are much more complicated, drainage calculations, traffic studies, and all the stuff that goes into a plan, that ten years ago, maybe the planning board really did have good constructive comments for a plan because it wasn't as technical as it is now. So we were gonna need to rely more on the town engineer's advice and opinions. And, and if it meets their criteria and they think it's good for the town, then I, I think it's good for us to accept their opinions and, and try to keep it from becoming a situation where we're questioning drainage structures and, you know, water regeneration and outfalls and all that stuff like we have. It, it just carries on and on here. It costs the applicants more money, it costs the people time, and it costs us to be here till eleven o'clock, eleven-thirty at night sometimes, so. Anybody, any more comments on the possible changes to our process?
If I can make just maybe a...
Brian?
Suggestion. I know part of the problem that I see at least is the multiple times that developers have to come back to a planning board meeting because of a continuance, because they're not ready. A suggestion that I've been thinking about making is that rather than accepting the plan and then continuing it to a date specific, we should accept the plan and continue, and not continue it and require a public hearing at the time when they're ready, rather than making them come back and come back, even though they're not ready yet.
You're gonna ask them to renotice then at that point and pay for renoticing?
Yeah. So it would be a nominal fee to, to do it, but then they wouldn't end up having to pay their engineer and their architect and everybody else to come back to five different meetings. They would pay once for the notification of a second meeting, and hopefully that's the time when they would get approved. They'd be ready to come to the planning board.
John?
It seems like we, is there a plan when someone comes in and they wanna do a project? Do they know that they're gonna have to speak with possibly DPW, Conservation Commission, zoning? Do they know what they need to do so they will be ready when they come to these meetings?
Do we have an established checklist, Brian?
There is a checklist on the application form. I personally feel like that form needs to be a little more clear and updated, and so I'm, that's one of the things...
Pick it up on yourself.
That's one of the things that I'll be working on, and I, I did put out a new conceptual application, and it'll be kind of along the same format as that one for our conceptual review. You know, I, I did put that before the board sometime last year, and, you know, we've implemented that and begun using it. It's, it's worked fairly well, and people have not had any complaints about that. I, I think it's important to detail out what the steps are for, for the developers as they go through the process. So, you know, there'll be a flow chart in there that helps them understand, okay, what's the next step, that kind of thing.
I'm gonna just speak one thing. Just the, the process here, sometimes, a plan is submitted, oftentimes it seems like it's, that after DPW reviews it, they've got like seven pages of corrections and omissions. And I think that, I think that's too much of our people's time being spent finding all that. I think the plans are not proper, some of these plans are not properly drawn. And when DPW bills out, out of the escrow account, the town is not allowed to make money on engineering charges for a review, but you can be sure that their engineer is charging a lot more than the town is charging for the review. And if the town is finding mistakes and telling the engineer they have to correct them, in my opinion, the town is doing the engineering for them. And I think we need to get away from that. I think we need to have a review done by the engineer, staff, and say, look, your drainage is not right, fix it and give it back. Instead of, Meg happened to go over each catch basin and each invert elevation, and each thing is wrong, wrong, wrong. It's not, we shouldn't have her time being, valuable time being used up by doing all that. I mean, I just, I just feel like sometimes the engineering is incomplete when we get it. I've seen it. I've read their town reports, come back here with seven pages of corrections. It gets wrong.
I agree. You know, there are other towns, many, many towns who have consultants on board who do nothing but review submissions.
And then charge the, out of the escrow account.
Charge the applicant for that review. Because you're right, we see some pretty woeful plans that come in, and it's, and it's not right for...
So let's, let's, let's discuss the possibility of doing that, then.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on one thing Brian said before I lose the thought, and this whole thing of these continuances and these continuances. This is a tremendous waste of time for us, number one.
Yep.
You know, when we've got volunteers, you know, donating our time at night, and we come in to find out that everybody's continued. You know, we're here for, for what? For nothing, really, number one. And number two, it does a disservice to the other applicants who we've put out farther because we think people are coming in. You know, and they finally will say, well, we can't come in and file a continuance. Well, we're doing a disservice to the, the applicant who's farther out on the calendar when we could've brought him forward.
In addition to the residents who show up to hear the application, and then they find out that it's been, it's been continued, they wasted their time.
Absolutely.
So there's a lot of time wasting, okay. Let's try to keep things moving here. Any more on the development regulation process changes at this time? Meg?
The only small thing I thought of is something the board seems to always be doing is waiving things for acceptance purposes only. I feel like you guys are constantly doing that. Is that something that needs to be changed? Like where, if, if we're doing this new process where something comes forward and they don't have the drainage study, they don't have the traffic study, it's okay. It's coming forward as a, as a concept, you know, or, I don't know. I just, you're always making those motions to waive for acceptance only and, you know.
Possibly with...
It's so repetitive, and do we need to change the regs? We don't have to do that?
I'll let Steve speak.
Yeah, I, I think Megan's right, because it's, kinda goes hand in hand with your point, Brian, because once we accept something, that starts that sixty-five day clock.
Starts the sixty-five day clock.
And if they can't get everything ready, we're gonna have to start asking for, asking them to waive that. So if things are more in line upon acceptance, that becomes less of an issue.
Do you think that the applicant is possibly feeling the board out for whether the project is gonna go or not?
I'm sure they are.
We have a process for that.
So if you come in and you, and you ask for a wa, for acceptance purpose only waiver of the drainage study, the topography, and the traffic study, now they, they make an application, and they feel like the board is, is receiving it positively, then they are willing to go forward with those expenses? Is that, you think that's part of the problem? Meg?
Can we require everything to come as a conceptual review? That is the first step. So it's conceptual, it just comes, the concept of the project, any major concerns can come out, and then we go through the whole technical review process, and then you come back for acceptance and possibly one other hearing if you have to, or whatever.
You make it required as opposed to optional?
Well, I would suggest if we're gonna do that, that we should do that as an internal meeting, not bring it to the board, because, again, that's just another long step in the process. And, and we could do kind of like a pre-application meeting with the applicant without having to bring it to the board and, and, you know, spend more time there.
Are conceptual meetings a butter-noticed public hearing meetings, or are they conceptual only?
Conceptuals?
Yes.
Are not publicly noticed?
So they would not have to pay for a butter notifications for an open public hearing?
Right.
So maybe what you're suggesting, Meg, is in lieu of asking for the waivers for acceptance only, that those projects be conceptual in nature to start and then morph into a full application and then not have to ask for those waivers at acceptance time?
Yeah, I'm looking for some kind of hearing at the beginning to pull out some of the major concerns because, you know, for instance, if somebody brings up something at a meeting here, like I'm aware of this issue and ask, they ask me to go look into it, then at least I know about something that I can go follow up on. And sometimes the residents bring up good points that, you know, because they live in the area, they know about a specific drainage issue or something, or, you know. So there's some good stuff that comes out that I follow up on where I wouldn't find out this stuff until the end, so that's all I, it's, it's kinda nice... all. I, it's, it's kind of nice to get a little input up, upfront, but I agree. I don't want to waste everyone's time.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Some of the, John, some of us might be able to start in Economic Development Committee where that could be presented to them first with a conceptual and have, somehow this board could be more letting them know that we have a standard, that we would like, we'd like the process to go, we'd like the process to keep moving. But in order for it to keep moving, you've got to be ready to be here. And maybe the ones that are really in the beginning stages, I mean, a good place to present this is with Economic Development. I know that they'd like to hear this thing, that the Economic Development Committee would like to generally hear this first and then, and then maybe they could critique it there or at least give them some input on the, on the first kind of one. But I think we need to be at a, at a standard where we want you to come, we want to do business with you, but you need to step up to this, to this particular level of readiness. And you need to be ready when you come here so we can, so we can make it easy for you to get through this process.
Well, EDC would be good for commercial projects, but for residential subdivisions and such, that wouldn't apply to that. Because EDC wouldn't have any input on a residential subdivision.
On the red flag that kind of comes up in my mind is just, you know, EDC meets once a month. We're, we're automatically kind of adding another step for them. And I think probably, you know, that type of discussion should be something that just comes from the planning and zoning, planning and zoning staff when they, when they walk through the door. Here's what we expect of you and, you know, don't bring us something less or else, you know, it's going to slow you down too much.
Yeah, I think it's got to be serious from the beginning. This is what we need. We want you to go through this, but this is what you have to do so we can, so we can.
And that's part of, I think, maybe getting that development application packet a little bit more clearly defined as, okay, this is what information we want from you upfront. Requiring a narrative, I think, is a very important thing for them to spell out, you know, here's what my water and sewer solutions are, or maybe I need septic. Here's what my utilities are. Here's what my, you know, roads and my, you know, all of the stuff that goes into a plan, they describe it in a narrative as well as putting it on the plan. That way, it's, it's much more clear for, for the board and for staff to understand what, what they're looking at.
Yeah, that's a, I'm going to let Carlos speak last because I want to move on after this.
Yeah, I mean, that's a very similar process that's used at the state level. I mean, they encourage pre-application meetings, which is the same general format we're laying out here. Encourage them to come in for a pre-application meeting. Let's talk about your project. Let's look at the issues. Let's identify the issues. We'll, we'll document what the issues are and here's how you need to address those issues so that when it comes in, in its final form as an application, it's really a done deal. At that point, it's an administrative process. So, the work upfront pays big dividends when it gets to this form.
Okay. Phil, that, John?
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to the next bullet point. It's the RSA changes that affect the planning board process and the board. Brian, could you highlight us on what RSA changes either are in the works or, or are coming up?
Honestly, I, I have not been able to research all of that and bring, give you any kind of good report for that. So, you know, I can definitely look into what is going on with the RSA changes and bring that forward to the board for some future discussion. But, I mean, if, if any of the members are aware of some of the things that are going on with RSA changes and, you know, I think we should discuss those.
I would defer to some of our members that are on the state government as well as Carlos.
Yeah, there is, there's one, oh man, I'm going to forget the name of it now, bill that under 674 adjusts the amount of time for demonstrating substantial completeness.
Yeah, for like a three-year time period, I think.
Yeah, it changes that. And I can't remember the number of the bill.
Well, if it, if it can be.
67439, maybe?
Well, that's the RSA, but I'm thinking of the bill that's been introduced to the legislature.
And what is it, a House bill or a Senate bill?
It's time limits for completing your project, basically.
Right.
It's, it's kind of giving a blanket extension to everybody.
So, it's the three-year timeframe that was brought up in the previous application?
Harvest Christian Church.
That that was only during a short timeframe. Now, they're talking about extending it permanently?
They're talking about doing it for all projects, I believe, and it's starting soon, this year, I think.
It's a House bill, Senate Bill 38. Is it a Senate?
Yeah, SB 38.
Now, I have one very quick question. If the, once a state sets a standard, does the town have the right to make the standard more strict as opposed to less strict? In other words, if the state sets a standard of three years, can the town say, fine, we want to have it one year and we're going to have it in our town for one year? Is that something that the town is up? I know we can't make things more lenient than the state standards, but I think we have the right to make them more strict than state standards. Like this wetland setback thing, we have 100 foot here in Gostown where it's 50 on the state, not 0 on the state.
I think, I think in a scenario like this where it's supposed to benefit the developer more, we can't make it more strict on the developer. We can make it less strict on the developer if we want. So.
I wonder about that.
I think you'd have to look at the specific statutes.
We'd have to look into that, Brian, because I don't know if you can make it less strict.
I don't think you can be more strict than the state.
You can or cannot?
I don't think the town can be more strict than the state.
Unless it's specifically in the statute.
Unless specifically in the statute.
On a lot of rules, we are more strict than the state. However, in this instance where it's officially extending you for three years, you know, we can't go back and say, well, no, you're extended only for one year.
Yeah.
We have to say, okay, well, we'll actually extend your time limit for five years if we want, but we can't, we can't, you know, make it, make it less than that.
Yeah, it's a lot of instances, towns have some more stringent wetland setbacks, they also have more stringent regulations when it comes to septic systems.
Yeah, I think.
Want to speak?
Go ahead. I'm just going to agree with them that there are towns that have more restrictive zoning regulations than are allowed by law and state law.
Phil?
I think that, that wording or the wording, when I read that originally, the one that you're talking about, if it's the same one as SB 38, they talked about the minimum timeframe. So, if that language stays in through the process and it stays in as minimum, then you, the town would be able to make it longer, but that would, depends what the statute is addressing.
Okay, any more discussion, Mark?
Yeah, on a different bill, because I don't, I'm on a different committee that doesn't hear anything to the planning, I don't know that much about them, but I was aware of one that had to do with workforce housing. Maybe you guys read about it?
I think we've addressed that here in Gostown, right?
Where this bill, this bill was up this year, it passed the House, but I think it died in the Senate Committee, but it would have removed the requirement that towns provide sections for workforce housing. Instead, off, let towns opt in if they wanted to.
Removed it?
So, I imagine somebody here, the town manager is probably following that bill. But again, I think it crashed and burned in the Senate.
Okay. We'll have to have, Brian, could you look into that and find out what the status of the workforce housing? Because we have that in our regulations now, I believe. I think we adopted those regulations.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Yeah, about two years ago, maybe.
If I may, SB 38 is relative to the extension for wetland and shoreline permits.
Yep, that's the one.
Right.
Okay. Can you get to the text?
Yeah, but I thought there was one that dealt with the timeframe for your approval process.
Yeah, there should be another one for approvals that go through planning board for site plan and subdivision.
Right, because that addressed the minimum, minimum time that they were good for.
Well, instead of having, wasting time looking for it, Brian can look it up for a subsequent.
I can review that and provide some information.
The other one about the fire, the fire sprinklers.
Yes, residential fire sprinklers.
Right.
Are they going to remove that as a requirement?
Yes.
I thought I read that in the paper. Good. Okay. And if anybody has any ones that come to mind after the fact, you can just send them to Brian so Brian can get a list going of these things in his spare time.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move down to the ongoing projects.
I'll laugh at that one.
We'll move on to the ongoing projects with the source water protection plan. Brian, I'd let you elaborate on that, although I think most people are up to speed on that one.
Yeah, you know, I'll just basically summarize, you know, again, we need, we need somebody to, to represent the planning board on that committee. We're meeting periodically with Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. There was, the last meeting that we had done was late March and we're probably looking at an early April meeting, again, with them to work on some things.
And.
Or early, is it early May? No? Or, I'm sorry, we're already in early April, early May, thank you.
We want to be sure to include the Village Water Precinct in this as well.
The Village Water Precinct has been engaged and they will be participating from now on in the, in the meetings. We've also made attempts at getting the other precincts in town to join in. However, it would be good to get some feedback from them if they even want to be involved due to the fact that their water comes from elsewhere. So, that's something that we are kind of fighting through. But basically, you know, the schedule going forward, they're looking at hopefully having everything buttoned up by September and that way we can present it to the board early enough that, you know, any issues remaining can be worked out by the time we get to December and public hearings for zoning ordinance and that kind of thing. So, that's basically the schedule on that and we'll keep you posted on that.
Now, just to be clear, this is a request from Southern New Hampshire Planning to put this into our development regulations. We can opt for the board to not to put them in if we choose so.
That's correct. The planning board can do whatever they want with the recommendations from.
We'll find out what the Village Water Precinct has in place for their own protection plan and we may find it, it's a duplicate, so.
Well, and really, I think what they're, what they're working on trying to being what the Village Precinct has and then incorporating those concepts that the Village Precinct is already working on in their source water protection plan into the wider vision of the whole town. And so, you know, that, those are kind of some of the things we're working through with them.
Sure.
I would just comment, that's a really important plan for this community. We don't have a whole lot of groundwater aquifer areas in Gostown. I mean, we need to have a solid source water protection plan in place.
Well, I think if you consult with the Water Precinct, you're going to find that they already have one in place.
Yeah.
And, and they, they have, they have control over every stream and brook in the town of Gostown.
Right, and I think that came to the planning board and we, we had adopted that or approved it at one time.
So, without dragging it out, we will, we will work with them and Southern New Hampshire Planning to come to a conclusion on this. Okay. Is that it? Next bullet point is the impact fee studies for both the transportation and school impact fee studies. Transportation, I don't know that term. I think we, is that Public Works?
That's the road impact fees.
Road impact fee, okay, for Public Works.
That's, that's the technical name for the road impact fee.
What, what is the study, what is the discussion on this matter, Brian?
Basically, I just, I put it on there for an update of, as an ongoing project. We've contracted with the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission to complete those two studies. And the zoning ordinance is required to update those every five years. And so, we're at the timeframe already that we, that we were supposed to have had those done. And so, those are a little behind, but we're working on those and hopefully should have them done in the next few months. Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission is doing most of the work and they'll be providing a report to the planning board when it's, when it's ready and that'll go for adoption by the planning board. So, I mean, that, that's just something to be aware of that that's coming down the pipeline.
Are they going to have a comparison from towns, what their impact fees are compared to what Gostown's are at this time?
What other towns are compared to us? We can request that. I'm not sure how in-depth they're looking at other towns, but I can.
I mean, it, it seems like it would be a sticking point because development is, is not going on very strong right now. And to even consider raising impact fees would put in more of a burden on development. And we just have to look at them and see what the board decides that they want to let them be or whatever the board decides, but we should.
And that's entirely possible for the board to do. You know, it's required to do the study every five years, but you don't have to update the, you don't have to change the fees every five years. You can go with what you've always had.
So, will you provide us with some information at a subsequent date so we can incorporate this into one of our scheduled, you know, meetings for, under the, I don't know, what part of the plan would be the beginning of the meeting or the end of the meeting, so we can discuss it like we do?
I will.
Okay, the next bullet point is the CIP projects that should be suggested or supported by the planning board this year need more active involvement. I chair the committee, so I'm going to listen to what you have to say and then I'll speak to the point.
Well, I think it's appropriate for the planning board to make some suggestions on any improve, improvement projects that they feel is necessary for the town. Obviously, the, the town's departments all submit recommendations for what they want, but the planning board, you know, should also, I think, be involved in submitting requests and proposals and that, and that sort of thing. So, you know, I was hoping that we could get some input from the members as to what they want to see done as far as improvement projects that, that are on their minds.
First and foremost comes to mind is where are you going to get funding for planning board suggestions for projects? Any department head that brings in a plan, a submission, has funding or is requesting funding for it through their department and their budget. We don't have a budget here.
Not always. I mean, some of the requests come through, are requests for tax increases. It's not, not every single project is a funded project that's on the CIP. I, I think you're aware of that.
So, what would you, what would you be a, an example of a, of a planning board funded project? Would you, do you have anything that comes to mind?
The one, and I know that this is definitely an unfunded thing that we would have to find funding for, but the one thing that I can think of is something related to economic development and that would hopefully encourage development on the benchmark and, and what's the other name for the other piece of property right there? But on 114, there's two pieces of property there that are, that are zoned appropriately for economic, you know, development there. And they need water and sewer. So, a project could be to extend water and sewer to those pieces of property. Obviously, it's going to cost upfront some money, but, you know, that's part of, I think, getting people interested in, in properties and doing development is giving them what they need to be able to develop. And if they can't, if they don't have those, a lot of people won't even look at the, the site. So, I mean, it, it just makes it more enticing for people to come and develop here, which is what we need.
Do you think it would be more appropriate for the Economic Development Committee to be a presenter at CIP as opposed to the planning board? Don't forget, the planning board ultimately approves the CIP matrix, so there's some, there's some approval authority involved with the planning board. So, if, it seems to me that if the planning board was going to be making suggestions, then they probably shouldn't have the authority to approve or deny the, the matrix at the end. It kind of a, conflict of interest as far as I can see.
That's, that's the.
So, EDC could certainly come in and make suggestions for these types of items that could be possibly added to a matrix and a new part of the matrix, if that's what you're suggesting. Anybody have any comments on the, on this matter?
Well, it's a, I have.
John?
Yeah, a quick one. That particular one is a, I mean, it's a substantial investment, substantial return to the community as well, if it gets off the ground. That's one of those few, but I would, I would like to see companies that are interested in it that would also be willing to bear some of that burden because for sure, it's going to be a few lean years coming up as far as increasing any, any of our taxes.
Well, and I think, you know, requiring repayment for the initial costs of extending those utilities could be a requirement at, at the site plan stage.
Yeah.
When they're getting their approvals for development.
Well, that's how the whole tax incremental TIF district tried to get. Well, that's how the whole tax incremental, TIF district tried to get funded and that went down in flames.
Right.
Because people didn't understand what the TIF was. They thought it was increasing their taxes.
Right.
It didn't actually work that way. Any other comments? How about the gallery? Any comments out of the gallery out there? Feel, feel free to speak up.
I wouldn't say brown, brownfields or-
Yeah.
Brownfields.
Well, that's the type of property that it is because it has some environmental problems.
Slopes.
Gentle slopes and benchmark are the two.
Gentle slopes.
Yeah.
If you build it, they will come.
You hope.
So, are we all done with the CIP? And we need more active involvement here. Is that from a board perspective or from a community's perspective, Brian?
Both, well, both.
I will s-
We, we do have the opportunity to invite any other of the planning board members to be on the CIP committee. It's not restricted to, you know, one member per committee like some other committees are. So, since it's kind of a planning board function, the planning board could have more than one representative on the, on the committee.
That would, that had, it's been structured differently, but I don't, that's probably not cut in stone. I will make a public appeal at this point. The CIP is trying to form for the May meetings and we have three community representatives that have declined to show up this year and participate because of other commitments. So, we're looking for community members and we'd like to see a budget committee member show up this year since we did not have one last year. Although, I don't know if Bill Gordon was acting in a budget committee capacity or not, but I thought he was a community at large member. Okay, so we need more, we need more members to serve on that committee. Next item is Conservation Commission, membership discussion with the Board of Selectmen. Brian, could you talk about that for a minute?
Well, I think I might wanna defer to Colas on this, but we received some comments from Colas via email regarding some of the discussions that have been happening at the Board of Selectmen's meetings and regarding the Conservation Commission. And we, you know, I thought it might be important enough to bring up at the planning board meeting tonight to either make some rec, some type of recommendation to the Board of Selectmen regarding what's going on with the membership there.
Well, I just wanna be, be very careful here how we tread. We're not going to tell the Board of Selectmen what they're gonna do. We may wanna state our support or, or something along that line. I'd be happy to support, comment and discussions on that, but I wanna be careful where we tread here tonight in terms of being critical or anything along that line, please.
Yeah, no, not meant to be critical. It's just that, you know, we as a planning board rely heavily on the Conservation Commission and then their input into the process and the role that they play in the planning process. This is all about planning.
Mm-hmm.
And proper planning. You know, I don't need to reiterate at all, but I mean, they're the, the Conservation Commission are the people who put boots on the ground. They go out, they look at those properties, they have the expertise. We're fortunate enough to have a Conservation Commission with a lot of expertise. We've got some highly qualified people, some dedicated people. And we rely on them heavily. I don't have to tell members of the board that. I mean, we look to them frequently to give us advice so as to make sure that, you know, when we as a board arrive at a decision, that it's, it's, it's well, and a well-informed decision and it's a proper decision and it's a decision that will withstand appeals if need be on, on issues relative to the resources in town. And that's what we look to the Conservation Commission for. That's a pretty important role in my, in my view as a, as a planning board member. And we do have a great commission and I'm concerned that, you know, the commission recommended certain members to the board, the Board of Selectmen and to not take action. It kinda leaves the board, planning board in the lurch here because who, you know, are, are we gonna end up with a gap? And that's my concern. Is it gonna, is there gonna be a breakdown in the planning process if, if we don't get a full commission appointed in a reasonable amount of time? That's all. And I, I just think we ought to give some consideration to that.
So, would you suggest something here that, to be said?
Well, I think, I think we ought to, as a planning board, extend the olive branch to the Board of Selectmen and say, you know, we, we need to work with you because we rely on people with expertise, yet you have the authority to decide who serves in those roles and who doesn't. So, maybe there's a conversation that needs to be had as to what value we place upon Conservation Commission members and what we're looking for as a, as a overall commission to serve us in our planning roles and make sure that we're consistent with what the Board of Selectmen's expectations are. And, you know, again, I, I say that as, as extending olive branches as opposed to, you know, a, a combative approach to things. Let's work together here. Let's figure out what it is. Apparently, the board has some concerns over the recommendations from the Conservation Commission. I think we ought to discuss those so that we can, we can air out the differences and figure out what we need to do to make sure that we've got a commission that can provide us as a planning board the information, the expertise that we need and we rely on.
Any other comments? John?
A quick one. In speaking with some developers, asking them, again, I don't, I only know what I've heard in the paper or read in the paper or heard around, okay? So, that I don't, I don't hold any faith then. But what I, what I, I guess my first question is, is I know that the Conservation Commission is important. I know that they do an important service for the planning board. I guess my real, my other, my question is, are they a critical, are they a critical committee? Are they, are they a necessary committee? Are they critical? If we didn't, if, if we didn't have a, if we didn't have a Conservation Committee as we have, would it affect the planning process? I mean, would it, would it really affect the planning process? Even though, just because we rely on them, is it a, a, a necessary reliance that this, that it has to be? Even though they do a very valuable service? I'm not taking anything away. I'm just looking at the other side of this. The developers that I've talked to are concerned that, and this is just from what I've heard and this is not through the Selectmen or anything, the amount of land that needs, that, that's being asked for to, in these projects. So, there's, there's a lot of people that have some issues with, with having to deal with this additional layer of bureaucracy that, that I guess, is it a necessary layer that, that, is it a mandatory layer, first of all? And then secondly, is it necessary? And if we didn't have it in the position that it was, would we still function fine and would it be okay? And would, would development move along as part of that streamlined process?
You look like you wanna rebut-
Well, I can, I can respond to parts of that. Is it, is it required? No, it's not required. There's towns in New Hampshire that don't have Conservation Commissions. There's towns that used to have Conservation Commissions and disbanded their commissions. I can tell you, my experience is the towns that do have Conservation Commissions as opposed to those who have disbanded are a much more cohesive community, I think. And they, they look at the resources available to them as citizens with a, with a much broader perspective than community. So, I, you know, the answer to one of your questions is, no, we don't have to have a Conservation Commission. I mean, it exists because the town wants one. So, I mean, that, that's the answer to that part of the question.
Okay, yeah, great.
You know, and I, and let me just touch on another thing. I've, I've often heard, you know, not only in Goss Town, but I, you know, I deal with towns throughout the state. I've heard them say that, you know, this board is over restrictive or this group is over restrictive. But when you say, can you give me an example? Rarely does an example come forth, you know? So, it's, it's one thing to talk about innuendo and those sorts of things, but when it's like, well, which project was it that was, was far too restrictive? It's hard for people to come up with specific cases, so. I think that Goss Town's Conservation Commission, I think, is pretty well-balanced. Or certainly, I would not consider Goss Town's Conservation Commission to be anti-development in any way. And a case in point to that is when the voters of Goss Town decided that it was appropriate to establish wetland buffers and wetland setbacks. The Conservation Commission, I'll even go out on a limb and say led the effort to make sure that commercial and, and industrial zoned areas were not subject to wetland setbacks. So, I think that's an example of the fact that I think we've got a pretty good balance in Goss Town. You know, certainly the Conservation Commission is, the Conservation Commissions in New Hampshire have no statutory authority whatsoever. So, we can't afford, we can't force people to give over land. We can't force people to go above and beyond what's required by law or local ordinance. The, the Conservation Commissions in New Hampshire are merely an advisory board. And that's true even when it comes to filing applications with the state for, for wetland permits. They can make comment, but it's not like Massachusetts where the Conservation Commission has statutory authority and you go through the Conservation Commission to get a project moved forward. That's not, and that's not the case in New Hampshire. So, it's, it's, again, it's an advisory body.
Well, that was gonna be my point, same thing. And the planning board can choose to take the advice of the Conservation Commission if they choose to incorporate it into a plan or they can choose to throw the whole Conservation Commission's report out the window and say, this is, this is excessive and we don't think it's, it's a good thing for the development for that area of the town. So, once again, to, to kind of sum this up, my feeling is that the planning board could send the Board of Selectmen a memo stating something to the effect that we encourage the continuance of the Conservation Commission. We are very pleased with the leadership that they've had in the past and that they've always provided us with beneficial information and been a, a very productive committee for our meetings. And we would recommend that they reconsider the existing committee to be left in place. And I think that's as far as we should go with any type of anything. I don't think we should-
I agree.
Go beyond that.
I agree.
And I'm not gonna put Phil on the spot because tonight we're not, I'm not gonna ask him any questions. It's not the point. I think as a board, if we agree to make that recommendation, then I think we could make that recommendation. And if, we'll take a straw poll among the members here. Mark, you have something to say?
Yeah, because I've been here long enough. I don't know enough background to how helpful they are other than what I've just heard from Colin. So, it's tough for me to say yes, I, as a member of this board, support keeping them around or expanding them, expanding their reach or anything like that.
Okay.
So, I may just have to vote either no or abstain just for lack of historical knowledge.
All right, well, is it, is it the consensus of this board to send a memo to the board supporting the Conservation Commission as is? Is that acceptable with this board or is, or should we make no comment at all and?
I think we should make no comment. I think that's the select, I think the Selectmen have taken this on as something that they need to do. They are, they, I think they know that we, I think they know that they, that they are a, are a advisor that we take, that the planning board uses their advice off and I think they know that. I'm not sure if we should get involved with this. It's, there's, there's something happening that I don't know if we understand. I mean, from what, again, from what I've read and-
I just know what I read in the paper today.
Yeah.
May? Yes, Colas, please.
I agree. I mean, it's clearly the board, it's clear that the Board of Selectmen has the authority to appoint members to various commissions. However, I think, I, I think it's healthy for a community when we work together to recognize and draw on the resources that we have because we don't have a whole lot of resources in this town. People aren't beating down the door to volunteer to serve on the Conservation Commission. We put out frequently requests for people to come join us. We have people come in, they come out, they come, you know, in and out. And we don't have a full commission now. So, it's, it's, it's hard to, for me, you know, as a planning board member, we rely on these people and we've only got a limited number of people drawn and we've got people with a vast amount of expertise which we need to help us make our decisions. To not have those people come forward, it doesn't make sense to me. And that's why I say I think we need to extend the olive branch to the Board of Selectmen and figure out what the issue is here and what we need to do to, in the best interest of the community, to make sure that the planning process doesn't get, doesn't suffer because of an action that the Board of Selectmen takes.
Steve, do you have any comment?
Yeah, I, I, I thought that your suggestion was a good one and well-worded and I would agree with, with sending a note of support of, for the value that the Conservation Commission provides the planning board in its guidance and support for the current opposition.
All right, well, then we'll, we'll just have a little, have a hand vote on that for, just for, we can understand what we're doing here. Those of who, who are in favor of sending a memo in support of the Conservation Commission and their current leadership.
Can I just say-
Yes, John, please.
Before we take this vote, who is gonna write this? What would it say? I, I mean, I, I heard what you said, but who's gonna write it?
Brian would take care of that, I'm sure.
And this is gonna be written after the vote? And would we be able, would it be?
Something we could review?
Yeah, yeah, that's appropriate.
Because I-
I'll tell you what-
The only way I would wanna do this, the only way I would wanna do this is generic, is-
Absolutely.
Here, we use them and-
Yeah, well, then maybe Brian-
I wouldn't wanna support or not support to the Selectmen on this issue. I think this is their issue.
Well, do you wanna have Brian compose something and email to everyone and then we can respond to him?
Yeah.
Directly and then Brian can tally the emails and send the vote, send the le, memo if it's, if he thinks it's appropriate based on the membership of the, vote of the membership? Or does it have to be in public session?
No, it has to be in public session.
I'm just curious. I don't wanna-
I think if you're gonna take any kind of a vote, are you gonna make any kind of a recommendation? It's gotta be public. You can't do it by email.
Well, yeah, have to be in-
You're right.
It'd have to be in a public meeting, yes.
So, should we decide on the wording right now and get it over with?
We come back in two weeks.
Well, I'm, I'm sure the board would wanna get it for their next meeting so that they'll have-
Well, you know, the commission's in place through the end of the year, the membership as is.
Right.
So-
Technically, the membership serves until there, a person is appointed in their place or the current members will serve until this, unless they step down, resign or somebody is chosen in instead. That's what the statute reads.
Maybe we can just do this. Maybe we can just let the Board of Selectmen members that are watching the meeting tonight listen to what we've all said and leave it at that. We don't have to actually send a memo if you don't think it's- If it's gonna muck the works up here and require it being written out and reviewed, I think it's kind of mucking up the works here. I'm in favor of doing it, but I don't wanna do it incorrectly.
Right, I- I would agree with that.
Phil, would you be willing to relay the sentiments of the board?
No, not a problem. I'll do that. It's part of my job.
So, we'll have Phil relay the sentiments of our discussion tonight to the Board of Selectmen and then they can act accordingly in, in their own authority and discretion and move forward from there.
They can watch a video clip. It was from eight twenty to eight twenty-eight.
Yeah. Okay. You have Public Works as the next item, Mark, Brian, excuse me. Let me see, Mark.
Yeah, and, you know, again, you know, all these bullet points are sort of coming from our fearless chair, so.
Oh, what, does, does he have any?
He, he just put it on as a, he actually had had several of the departments on there. We, we took most of them off because we didn't wanna discuss other departments if they're not gonna have anybody here. So, we left Public Works on since Megan's here. So, if you got, if you have any thing you wanna discuss, Megan, or if the planning board wants to maybe discuss anything regarding Public Works and, you know, review of projects, you know, I think that's, that would be open.
Meg, did you have any prep, preparation for this tonight or is this hitting you blindsided?
Yeah, no, I don't have any preparation for it. I didn't know.
Well, I'll tell you what. Could, could we, could we impose upon you to relay any problems that Public Works may have with our procedures or processes that you'd like to send in form to Brian and we can discuss them at a future meeting?
Yeah, I mean, really, I, I mean, I, I think things are okay. I agree that maybe we should, you know, try and do more of a TRC on the side to save you guys some time from all that stuff. I, I agree with that. And I was thinking maybe, you know, we were talking about involving the EDC. I don't know if they're invited to our TRC committee meetings, but they could be for commercial properties. If you wanna get their involvement that way.
I don't speak their language.
On an extra step, it's the same TRC meeting if, if a representative could come to one of our TRC meetings. That way, we could get some input from them.
Too many acronyms.
Sound like government speak here.
Okay. Well, I guess we can move on from Public Works. It'll get handled. The next thing is the Hillsborough County Zoning Committee, which I didn't know existed until tonight.
Doesn't.
Established group to- I think what Alan wants done- I think what Alan wants done here, without reading all this, I think Alan wants the committee, the planning board, to try to assist the Hillsborough County complex in developing the county complex, to help them establish a plan to utilize those structures and get them realized as businesses or something down there. The only one thing I would wanna know is to, is it gonna require a zoning change of any kind? Because that's, land is all zoned as...
Agricultural.
Agricultural county property. And are we gonna be permitting businesses to move in down there into those zoning areas? And secondly, is it, is the town gonna benefit tax-wise from those businesses if they're in county property, which doesn't pay tax on the land? So, I'm just curious how the town would benefit from this.
I believe the way it works is, is they would pay the taxes if they're not a nonprofit or other governmental agency.
Anything that generates income. It's by statute. The statute determines how they tax.
So, if they rented a county building, they would pay tax to the town of Gostown?
If, if the county is rent, my, the last time we had that issue, as long as the statute hasn't changed, okay? If the county is generating an income out of a facility, let's say they rent it out to somebody and it's generating an income, now it's not considered that it's producing an income, it's taxable.
What's taxable? Building or the contents, or the, or they pay business taxes to the state?
Well, if you have a structure and they're renting out that structure, obviously the structure is sitting on a piece of land. So, however in the assessment goes, when you figure out that structure, and let's say they have a parking area, you know, just like we have a site plan, a business comes in with a site plan, they have parking here, they, what, what they have, those are part of that revenue-producing portion, and those are, are looked at on the assessing, for purpose of assessing, and there's a determination made as evaluation, and sometimes it could be done on the income approach. I mean, you have three, there's three ways of assessing property. One is the income approach that you would do on a multifamily or a business, doing it that way, and whatever would be appropriate for that, or sometimes two different ways, you, you might do two different ways to see how the formula comes up, what the final income, what the final is, and they'd be assessed a tax on that, like any other property.
Who would be assessed a tax? The county?
The county.
And they'd be obligated to collect that from their tenants and pay the town of Gostown?
That's right. And of course, when you get your tax bill and you see that county portion, that's gonna go up proportionally, because everybody that pays, that's taxed from the county goes in, just so that you understand.
As much as I'd like to see the complex develop, I wanna make sure the town is gonna benefit from all this, as opposed to us going through all this process and becoming involved in it for, for what?
Can I make a suggestion then?
Absolutely.
At this point with that, I mean, I think it's a good idea, but why don't, why don't we look a little bit further into this, and perhaps I could have some discussion with the, with the assessor, or Brian can, have some discussion with other staff members to see how that, to answer your questions, how it would work, and would there, would there be a benefit?
And will we have to have a zone change?
There would be required a zoning change for any uses that are not allowed within the agricultural district.
But it's a county, they technically don't have to, they can do what they want.
But then, once they lease it to someone else, those people have to conform to zoning.
I don't know.
So, we could get a zoning change, that's not an insurmountable hurdle.
No, but that's a question that needs to be answered.
These are the kind of questions we have to have answers to, ultimately.
I agree. Yeah. Yeah, because it's just not the existing buildings and infrastructure, it's the vacant land, too. There's a lot of vacant land there that can be put in use.
Any, any future development and all that, you know, you wanna be able to have that zoned correctly for whatever those types of developments will be.
But then again, when you're looking at that, let me just ask this one question. What is the, what's the principal use? If you have one large parcel, how many principal uses can you have? If you have a court, and if you have other, are you following me?
The subdivision?
Principal uses. At that point, the question that I, I ask, how many principal uses are you allowed? And even though it's zoned agricultural, can they even have animals anymore if they haven't had animals? Because that's, we went through that whole thing with the chickens.
Excuse me. Would we require, would we be talking about requiring site plans? If you're gonna, if the county's gonna develop a property down there for commercial rental, would we require parking plans and handicap and...
I would hope so.
You know, all the ADA requirements?
Because otherwise, you'll end up with a patchwork development, you'll end up with a cohesive development that fits together.
So, these, all these questions could be addressed with the county commissioners if we get involved in this process. And I think Alan probably wants to get involved in it as well, because he seems to be pretty dialed in on this.
And just one thing out of curiosity...
Yeah.
Over there, how many, how many parcels are there? In other words, we have one parcel on one side that has a nursing home, we have another parcel on the other side that has a county comp, uh, the court that's on there. Are both sides of the road one parcel? Are they separate parcels? Because the question that I bring up is, how many principal uses can you have on a parcel?
Right, and that could become a special use or a conditional use from...
I'm fairly certain they're separate parcels.
We'd have to look, yeah.
But they were all at one time, one piece of property, because it was all Governor Cheney's property.
Well, if, unless it was subdivided through the land boards here, it's...
Yeah.
It was, it would not be separate parcels, would have to have gone through subdivision.
Well, I know the prison is on a separate parcel, then, I mean, that's...
Well, maybe that was subdivided at one time, we'd have to look into that.
That could be for the sake that it was leased to the state.
Perhaps.
Okay. Well, those are questions that'll need to be answered. Next one is, does the planning board wanna initiate any new programs? Street tree program? Well, we have street tree requirements now for part of our regulations, don't we, Brian?
Uh, we do have requirements for planting street trees when new development goes in. I'm not sure what Alan may have been thinking about, you know, maybe there's a separate program that you can get into, similar to like a Main Street Community Program or something that, you know, just encourages street trees along the Main Street area or some, you know, I'm not sure.
John?
Is there a way that we could encourage Main Street to assist in that, in that beautifying of Main Street through planting trees, or, I mean, could, could they take that on as they have a voice on Main Street and doubt?
They just don't have any money to do it.
Well, if I could, anything to do with planting trees on Main Street would definitely have to go through Public Works, because the issue is what the roots do to the infra underneath.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, we have the sewer, we have the water lines, we have all that infrastructure. And one of the biggest issues, that might be a reason why we don't have as many trees that we have there, because a lot of that infrastructure goes back, especially with the Village Precinct, I mean, they were, they were, they were created back in the eighteen hundreds for the impoundment of water, for the fire station, all right? So, all those water lines and everything, I mean, some of those water lines go back to nineteen hundreds, so...
Uh-huh.
And what they're made out of, so roots could definitely be, you know, be, be an issue.
Okay. So, we don't really, so, street tree problem with the street tree program, would just exclude, would not be Main Street, for instance?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily not be Main Street, but what I'm saying is, I would, I would be concerned that if we were gonna try to say that to Main Street to do, put more, more trees out here in front of Town Hall, that that's, that that's an issue.
Yeah, okay.
That needs to be, I mean, you've got the Village Precinct, we have the sewer lines, we've got all that other stuff that's underneath there. Okay, so...
Or maybe no tree. And so, and...
Well, and honestly, I, I'm not sure what Alan's thought process is on.
Well, we can let, we can let him discuss this at a future meeting. He can enlighten us. Mark?
Yeah, and if he wants to do that, I might suggest that we consider the converse to this question of new programs and see if there are any programs we might want to repeal or roll back or reduce, if they're no longer effective or they're too much of a burden on developers.
Okay. And then the last item is website improvements. I don't, we don't, the planning board doesn't get involved with the website, do we?
Website looks good.
Okay. The town's website, you mean?
The town website.
Oh, okay, the town website.
Oh, I'm, well, projects website, okay.
I didn't, I thought this was related directly to the planning board, I didn't, I didn't understand it was the town website.
Probably, yeah, might be, yeah.
When I read that, what I thought he meant, maybe some of the projects that are coming here to have those on the website.
Right. And I actually added that, he put on their website improvements, and I put that little bullet point as a possible thing that we could do is, you know, kinda highlight some of the projects that we've been working on, put some pictures up there, similar to kind of what's going on with the, I think the EDC has started to try to do that a little bit with some of the projects around there.
And what's the purpose of that, Brian?
Just to show what's going on in the town, help, hopefully help maybe, you know, the future developers that wanna come into town, they, they can go on and see what's going on and how much activity there is, and, you know, maybe that would entice them to come.
Who would you have do all this work?
Well, uh...
A volunteer?
I can't answer that right now.
We'd have to have a new position.
IT.
IT is probably...
How about a high school student?
Usually the chairman of the committee that gets, gets...
If I could figure out a sign in email, I'll work on it.
Actually, this, this recommend, this New Hampshire, Salem, New Hampshire website page that's in there, that was done by a high school student, I think, from, from the Salem area, and, you know, they'd gotten him to do it, probably as just some intern work to do or something, I don't know, but...
Well, we can, we can discuss this, if we're gonna, the planning board is gonna sanction this, we need to have a lot more discussion about it. Can't just decide it tonight. Website development and maintenance is a huge time sink.
Yeah.
Huge time sink. Yeah.
Students could get, probably could get a credit for it.
Sure.
All right. This concludes the list. I am gonna ask Kevin if he has something you're here for specifically, or are you just here in general purposes, Kevin?
I was here, I was invited here as part of the land use boards.
Do you have anything you'd like to add at this time? You've been very quiet this whole night.
No, I guess the only thing I'd say is a repeat of what Derek had said a few meetings ago, talking about just the relationship with the zoning board and the planning board, and that as we go forward on the zoning board, when we look to an application and we're looking at the spirit of the ordinance, we may ask, you know, the zoning ordinance is allowed for the application, go to the planning board, and it's, so it's not for an okay, a thumbs up, that's not what we're gonna be asking for. What we would look at is what drove the intent of an ordinance, especially in an ordinance that we may have not have looked at in a, in a long time.
So, when you're considering a variance request...
Correct.
You're gonna memo the planning board for input on your quest, so, did the planning board add any concerns? Is this what I'm, is this what I'm hearing?
In the process already, in certain instances for subdivisions, et cetera, that process already sends the application to the planning board for comment.
Right, we've had them in the past.
So, I think there's just been a difference of our understanding, trying to understand what the planning board's role is in that request for comment. And so, what I'm here to say is, that request is not to give us a thumbs up whether you like the application or would recommend approval. It's, we would probably get the most benefit if the board had a comment on maybe what the ordinance that they're seeking relief from, and the variance for, maybe some history on it, if the, if the planning board has that.
The specific ordinance that's being requested to have, to be var, have a variance granted, okay?
And so, I think that would help the board, considerably.
Good.
Not as special, it's not outside, and not a new process, it's just that when we do send the application in accordance with the zoning ordinance as it states, that's what we'd be looking for.
Good.
Other than that, the CIP, I've had some conversations with Brian over the last couple of weeks that I'm going to be joining you.
Oh, good.
The CIP.
Excellent.
He's already on my calendar, there's one date, I'm not gonna be able to make it, a cruise is involved.
Oh, come on.
I told him he has to cancel his cruise, but he didn't go for it.
Just for your information, what we typically do is, at our first meeting, we establish who is going to be at what meetings based on their schedules, and then we oftentimes will leave a meeting off the schedule if not enough people are gonna be there for a quorum, so, we, we make adjustments.
One thing to remember now, that we're starting to use Skype, so you're on the cruise, you could have the meeting via Skype.
Yeah, Facebook, Skype, yeah, we can.
I'll be about eight time zones away, so we'll see.
I don't wanna be having a meeting while he has a margarita in his hand.
Unless we all have margaritas in our hand.
Right, just wanna be fair, if we don't have one.
Any other public comments? I, I'm, just make sure anybody has a chance to speak that's been here. Meg, you're all set with everything?
I have a comment or a question?
Please, John.
I had a house session yesterday morning, or Tuesday morning, and I missed the Mass Road Sewer meeting at the firehouse. It was at nine o'clock in the morning, I believe. Was anybody there that's here that would like to...
Could you enlighten us as to what the, what the subject matter of that meeting was? Because I don't, I don't know what that's about.
I wasn't there, I was in Concord. We had session Wednesday morning, and I missed the, I missed the meeting at the firehouse with the sewer, maybe the sewer commission, and maybe the sewer project managers.
And what was the, what was the subject matter? To extend the sewer, or what was...
Kinda like inform the businesses around the area, inform the neighbors that I assume that there's gonna be some, I know that there's ledge, how are we gonna get rid of, how are we gonna finish the project? How are we gonna tear the road back up again?
We're talking about Pinnardville Sewer Line.
Pinnardville Sewers.
Okay. Now, I wanna make sure I understood where we were talking. Meg, could you highlight?
It wasn't after meeting, but it was Wednesday night, it got postponed from Wednesday morning to Wednesday night, so I believe it was just last night, six o'clock.
I was there, and nobody was there.
Oh, okay.
I was in the parking lot, actually.
Maybe that got postponed a week. There's been so many emails flying around on that project. I had my regular construction progress meeting for that project postponed also, so, I just posted something on the website the other day, and I thought it was postponed to tonight, Wednesday, but it might be till next Wednesday then. I'd have to go online and look. But it was to discuss the noise, the noise issue that work at night, like it was night work. I think that's what they were gonna have, was to inform the businesses and what the process was.
Were they requesting to work at night, is that what you're saying?
They already have requested to work at night from the morning question, I believe it's been approved.
The businesses had wanted it to be at night, so it was less of an impact on the businesses during the day, because that, that hurts them when customers can't go to, you know, access them during the day.
Okay.
So, the plan is that the mainline work is gonna happen during the day still for...
The services are gonna do at night.
All the services will be done at night. So, we're, we're gonna keep, everything I get, I post online. So, anything I get from HTA, any updates, I'm trying to keep that online. So, I, I apologize for not remembering which meeting was postponed till when, but I put an update online postponing that meeting, and I thought it was from the morning till at night, but it might've been a whole week.
Well, technically, this relates to John's query only and not to anything to do with the planning board. So, is there anybody John could contact to get the information?
I know Mike Trankey and everybody, but I just, Mike Tranke, but I just thought somebody might've been there from here.
Okay.
I don't feel so bad.
All right. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add to tie this all together for the, for[1665.83] All right. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add to tie this all together for the, for the end of the evening?
Yeah, we're going to pick today with some action items. I mean, it's been a lot of stuff talked about and back and forth and we had to do this, we had to do that. And I'm just, Brian, is there?
I thought we gave Brian direction and went through here.
That's my question. Does he have, is it clear to him what the action items are?
Uh, I mean, I know I've already got several things that I'd like to work on. And I think maybe an update meeting before we actually, you know, incorporate any of this stuff would be appropriate. You know, once I can sort of nail down a little bit more details and information and that kind of thing.
Yeah, and I think maybe when Gail gets done with the minutes, we'll be able to pick out where the action items need to be developed, a list in some sort of timeframe.
It was just sort of a brainstorming session tonight and then maybe we could develop some lists that, that we deem important and then Brian could start working on them.
Yeah.
Work on, of course. Brian, on the bottom of our sheet, have you, the correspondence and FYI items on this sheet came in our packet. Could you, is there any of those that are, that need to be discussed tonight? A through E.
I will just kind of point out for our new members, John and Mark, any of these workshops and, and things like that that you want to go to. We do have some funding in our planning board, and not planning board, but planning department budget for some of, some of that. So, you know, if you're wanting to go to any of this in order to maybe familiarize yourself better with how planning boards and the process works with this, you know, just give me a call and let me know if you'd like to attend. For example.
The annual ones come out.
The OEP one here, Planning and Zoning Conference on June 11th.
Yeah, that's the annual, the big one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one might be appropriate for you guys. If you wanted to, to attend that, then just let me know if you're available.
Yeah, as long as they don't have anything in session at the time.
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, according to your schedules, I mean, you'll, you'll know what.
It's on Saturday.
You'll know what you'll be able to do, but this is, this is on a Saturday, yeah.
This year we might be busy.
Yeah, so, so I mean, you know, if, if any of you, and, and that goes for everybody too. If any of you are ever interested in going to one of these conferences, then, you know, let me know and I'll let you know how much money we've got left. So you can go. For example, I think Gail's going to go to, to the one on.
OEP, yeah.
What does that stand for?
Office of Energy Planning.
I can tell you, I've been to it twice. It's, it's pretty beneficial. It's a lot of lawyers who give talks about legal implications and how the planning process is set up under state statute and all, all kinds of good stuff. It's.
All right.
It's pretty enlightening.
All right. And letter C, we have a letter here from the Department of Environmental Protection, DES, rather, not, in fact, DES, that the applicant for Viking Orchards Tax Map Five, blah, blah, blah. Based upon a recent request, we are hereby amending the Alteration of Terrain Permit. The amendment consists of a five-year time extension for Worthley Hill Project.
I think when applicant was in the last time, I think they mentioned that they had gotten that, but it wasn't formalized.
Okay, well, it appears to be formalized here because I have a sign from Ridgely Mock.
Mock.
So the new permit expires on March 24th of 2016. So they officially have an extension on their alteration of terrain permit. All right. Does anybody else have anything else?
Oh, I've got.
All right. You know what's next, Collis?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
By Collis, seconded by Phil. To adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Substances? Motion carries.